Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin our meeting. I'm Council President Teresa.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin our meeting. I'm Council President Teresa Cal Smith. I'm going to go over some ground rules after I introduce my colleagues. I'm joined tonight by, or we are joined tonight by Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, who is our Council President pro tem; Councilman Daniel Lavelle, who is our Finance Chair; Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, who chairs the Innovation and Performance and Asset Management Department, which is our technology; and Councilwoman Coghill, who chairs our Department of Public Works, which is also our department of mobility and infrastructure. And we have Mike Stralick from our City Council Budget Office, and he's going to do a brief intro. And we also are joined by David Geiger from the Urban Redevelopment Authority and our council clerk. We're going to hear a brief presentation from an opening from Assistant Director Stralick, and then we're going to hear a presentation by Councilman Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lavelle. And after that, we're going to hear from you. And what we're going to tell you, you can do is, we're going to pass the mic. You can stay seated where you are, if you want to sit where you are. Stay seated where you are, face council when you do your presentation or your comments. And then the Madam Clerk, who's standing there, will let you know when one minute is up. We're going to give you one minute to make your comment or your opinion about what we should be doing with the ARP funding. This meeting is in regard to the American Rescue Plan funding that council has voted on. And the reason we're having the meeting is because we can always amend, and we could also talk about the 2022 budget at a later date, and maybe consider some of your ideas for that as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Stralick. And during the meeting, after you ask your question or make your comment, council members may respond back, so we have a dialogue instead of just a meeting, okay? And we'll join, Mike, please take over. Thank you.
So, quick process explanation. The city's budget, it's not like the private sector. It's not like your personal checking account. As we learned in third grade civics, the legislative branch, government controls the purse strings. So, in order for the mayor and department directors to start rehiring positions that have been frozen for going on 18 months now, start implementing some of the programs that have been on hold, council, the legislative body, had to do an official action to authorize that spending, which they did two weeks ago, three weeks ago. Now, what they did is not set in stone forever. Of course, we can change that at any time. As we just reopened the 2021 budget, at the same time, the discussions on the 2022 budget have already started. So, you know, we passed a plan so we could start paying our bills and hiring staff and not firing staff. But that plan, of course, is subject to change. And I could talk more about it, but I believe Rev. and Councilman Lavelle have a presentation.
Ready?
Okay, I'm sure.
No, they are on. Because of the room's so small, it's not going to project the sound, but it's set for television, so.
Okay. So, as long as you can hear me, so, there's a presentation I'm going to go through, but let me make it very clear how this works. The money goes into a trust fund. Then money goes out of that trust fund to our budget, or to the departments or the authorities it's designed for. So that's kind of mechanically how this works. The City of Pittsburgh allocation of funding for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The COVID-19 pandemic created a fiscal emergency. And therefore, because of that fiscal emergency, the American Plan Act of 2021 was done, it was done for core functions of local government. If the city had not received those additional revenues by July 1st of this year, it would have been forced to lay off 600 employees, including firefighters, paramedics, and police, as will eliminate some city services. Thankfully, in March of 2002, 2021, the American Rescue Plan, ARP, allowed the city to restore its 2021 budget and the required five-year plan. We are required by law to have a five-year plan, so whenever we do a budget, we must do both the budget and the five-year plan by law. The American Rescue Plan Act provided funds to local governments. We were not the only government to receive these funds. The state of Pennsylvania received their own funds, but locally, there were three government entities that received funding. One is the County of Allegheny. They received $380 million. The City of Pittsburgh received $335 million. The school district received $80 million. Now, each of these government entities perform different functions. Oftentimes, citizens come to us and say, why aren't you doing what Kentucky, Kansas City is doing, or what Baltimore is doing, or what New York City is doing? A lot of times, they don't understand that every city is designed somewhat differently. And some of the functions of other cities, the City of Pittsburgh doesn't have those functions. For instance, other cities pay for their human services directly. City of Philadelphia, for instance, City of New York, they have in their own budget, both in, City of Philadelphia has both the school board and human services in their budget. City of Pittsburgh does not. Our human services is done by the county. The city doesn't directly do human services. And so, the County of Allegheny does human services. All counties in Pennsylvania, except for Philadelphia, do their social services. The only reason that Philadelphia does it, because Philadelphia is both a city and a county simultaneously. It is its own county and its own city at the same time. Criminal justice in the courts, of course, Court of Common Pleas, District Attorney, Allegheny County Jail. They also do adult education through the Community College of Allegheny County. Those are the key functions that the county does. Now, the city, we do some specific things. We do public safety, fire, police, EMS, code enforcement. We do public infrastructure, such as public works and repairing and road replacement, paving roads, infrastructure, streets, maintenance, parking right away. And then through some of our authorities, like PWSA, we do drinking water, wastewater and stormwater management. Through the Urban Redevelopment Authority, we do for sale housing, we do affordable housing, business economic and neighborhood development. Finally, the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh does public housing and affordable, actually, home ownership. Now, the school district does education. It does both early childhood education, elementary education, secondary education, and it also does, as Mark Brentley can tell you, young adult education. And I think they can serve children up until the age of 21. I may be wrong about that, but I believe it's 21, and they can serve children up until the age of 21. Then after 21, they can no longer get services through the school district. They would then move over to the Community College of Allegheny County if they want to continue stuff, or through the Allegheny County Intermediate Unit. Now, the American Rescue Plan, the city is receiving altogether $335 million. We are getting that money in two installments. The first installment, we already received, I believe, last month in July, and we received $167.5 million. We may have gotten the money in June, but something like that, in the June, early July, $167.5 million 2021, and then an additional $167.5 million in 2022. Those funds have to be by federal law, under contract, and spent by December 31st, 2026. Any funds not encumbered by that date have to go back to the federal government. It's a use it or lose it scenario. Federal formula dictates how the city receives the funds to replace the revenue lost by pandemic. So the federal government did a calculation, and they estimated what our losses would be. And it's primarily for operating expenses, to restore the payroll, to avoid layoffs, and fill positions necessary to fully operate the city. The City of Pittsburgh created a trust fund to strengthen accounting and increase public transparency. So rather than put the money directly into our, into the city savings accounts, what we did instead, our general fund, which acts like our savings account, we actually put the money in a separate trust fund, so we can monitor and show where every dollar of those ARP money is, goes. The ARP funds are specifically designed to be spent on the things the city would normally spend money on, on its regular course of business. I need to say that maybe more than once. These funds are not, it's not a slush fund, where the city can say, well, this, you know, we want to go into the restaurant business, so we think we should open up 25,000 red places. I would like that, but that's not what the money was designed to do. The money was specifically designed to be spent on things the city would normally do business, including in its regular course of operation. These funds are designed to be expended on the central city services. That's the primary use. There is some money that has discretionary use. That's a small amount of the money. Federal best practices indicate that any discretionary spending be invested primarily in long-term capital improvements. For instance, there's a difference between feeding one someone which is a port. Everybody's, anyone who's hungry, absolutely, I understand your pain, if you have pain, but if we feed you for, you know, a few months, when those few months are over and that money's gone, that need still remains. It's better to invest in something that will have long-term benefits. And so, the discretionary spending, for the most part, is, the preference of council and best practices is to invest the money into capital things, things that will have benefit beyond a calendar year, that will have a three- or five- or 10-year benefit. The city's discretionary spending is, should be used for transformational purposes instead of transactional and temporary items. And council, as a whole, has followed that advice. Significant ARP funds spent on nonessential programs or programs not substantially related to the city's essential obligations could and would have significant unforeseen consequences. And I won't go into that at length tonight, but trust me, if we decide to go, because the way the city is, the city, we have many different contracts. We have many different obligations. If we start spending this money in ways that are not the city's normal practices, we would have other problems with our upcoming contracts, we would have problems with our upcoming city services. It could have a significant detrimental effect on the city in ways that you do not foresee. So even though it is tempting to put the money into some new ways, the money was not designed to do that, and when you change one part of the city government budget, you will have an impact on everything else in the city. And if you ask me questions, I'll go into that in greater detail. So, the city enacted the Equity First Spending Plan. This plan accounts for the funds necessary to alert layoffs or job terminations of city employees, fund public infrastructure like lead line replacement, neighborhood recreation centers like this one, and other quality of life investments. Prioritize investments in communities, in community and economic development projects in the city's black African-American neighborhoods. We prioritize investments specifically in black neighborhoods. And so, the last two things, you should have both a copy of this PowerPoint and a copy of the handout that shows you where every dollar goes and every project, and an explanation of what it is. So it shows you kind of how this three, this money was calculated. And these are the major categories that the government looked at, that we're going to lose money in, in these areas. Lost revenue, which is payroll tax, amusement tax, and then you see those other water, other things. And then on the next page, you see the broad spending areas. These are the broad spending areas where we're going to spend money on. Capital, special revenue lead paint project, the URA, and we'll go into that. URA is how we're going to do affordable housing and home ownership. The Pittsburgh Parking Authority, we're only going to give a little bit of parking authority, but we're actually going to have the parking authority not pay us. They pay us an annual amount. We're actually going to give them a waiver for a while on the annual amount. The parking authority has been devastated by COVID because people are not parking. Our garages are empty. People are working for home. And so, the parking authority has lost, Erica can tell you, they've lost significant revenue. She's on the Parking Authority Board. Significant revenue based on COVID. The PWSA, which is the water lines, by the way, we started in black neighborhoods. We started replacing the landlines. The first neighborhood that got the landlines replaced was Homewood. We started in black neighborhoods on purpose. One PGH is guaranteed income. We're going to do a pilot program where we're going to actually give a group of primarily black single mothers, that's who actually is going to be in the program primarily. There'll be others, but it's going to be primarily mother, single mothers and primarily African-American women. And we're going to give them, I think it's $500 a month, guaranteed for a period of time. Because research says that if you give poor families money, they don't spend the money, believe it or not, they don't spend it on the club, they don't spend the money on clothes. They spend the money investing in their needed things, their children, food, gas, light. And it increases their quality of life and gives them a breathing space to pursue, whether it's education or other things to better themselves. And that's one PGH. And so, those are the basic categories of where the money is going to be spent. Now, I'm going to turn the mic over to Councilman Lavelle, who is our Finance Chair and who leads our budgetary process, to explain some specific areas, highlights of how this spending plan is equitable.
Thank you, and thank you all for having us in your, in the West End this evening. So, per Reverend Burgess's statements, based upon what we have to use the money on, based upon what the federal guidelines said, what we decided we really wanted to do is, because these are dollars we otherwise would not have, we wanted to spend them in an equitable way, which for us meant investing in the neighborhoods, the people of those neighborhoods, the physical structures within those neighborhoods that otherwise, for decades, have seen lack of investment. And so, we're going to quickly go through a high-level review of what that looks like. So first and foremost, we wanted to ensure that every neighborhood was clean and safe. And so, due to that, we're dedicating $13 million to replace the city's aging vehicle fleet, including those used by the Department of Public Works to help improve patching potholes, removing snow, treating roads, sweeping the streets, and maintaining catch basins. You, on first glance, you may not think that's a sort of an equitable initiative, or that's really going to affect underserved communities, but it actually does. Because so often, the example that was used at the last meeting was highly traveled roads. So like Forbes Avenue or Penn Avenue will always get paved first because they have such a high usage. And those roads are running through more fluid neighborhoods. Therefore, when we don't have all the trucks and the ability to handle those roads, those roads will also get salted first, because the highest workers are in downtown Pittsburgh and in Oakland. So you have to ensure those roads are being taken care of. So, once those vehicles break down, which as an example, this past winter, we literally had trucks that were simply not salting, not plowing streets because of the aging, and then that affects lower-income neighborhoods that then don't see that service. So one way to be equitable is to invest in the infrastructure that's going to allow us to come out and better service your neighborhoods. We also decided that no resident deserves to live in overgrown, trash-stone vacant lots and with dilapidated buildings. One of the highest complaints, I know my office, I believe this is true for Reverend Burgess's, maybe Councilman Coghill's, President Smith's, is we get consistent calls in our offices about maintaining vacant lots, as well as dilapidated buildings. And the reality is, we simply do not have all the money on hand to address that. And so, what we wanted to do, and we're dedicating $18 million to the vacant property maintenance. That means we'll be able to better clean the lots, we'll be able to better board up properties, we'll be able to better demo properties that needed demo. We have thousands of properties that are on our condemned property list. We only have enough money to tear down 50 to 100, if that, a year, right? And so, now we're going to put $2 million into demolition to be able to deal with that. We're also going to put $10 million into our land bank, which will help really begin turning around vacant property in underserved neighborhoods. The Equity First Spending Plan also emphasized that equity means an increased preventive services instead of increased police interaction. For the last year, for the last year and a half, council has heard over and over again how our communities need to interact with our police force differently, right? That they want to see the police engage, walking beats. But more than that, they also said we need more social services. It's not necessary for a police officer to necessarily show up for a homeless person. We need a healthcare provider. We need a social service worker to be dealing with, dealing with that. And we heard you, and we agree. Therefore, this plan now dedicates $10 million to the Office of Community Services, and that office will provide social services to residents in distress, and it will also diminish the chance for unnecessary interactions with our, with our police force. Moving to our capital budget, we're putting approximately $60 million into our capital budget. And first and foremost, as Reverend Burgess mentioned, we have an aging infrastructure within our city, but at the same time, we need to make sure that all our children have safe places to go and be, especially now with our education. We need to make sure our rec centers have as much high tech in them. We need to make sure they have broadband in them. One of the uses is the federal government said we can use some of these dollars to provide broadband, so we're going to be moving broadband into all our centers, but we're dedicating $20 million to upgrade all our facilities across the city. So that includes Conley Rec Center, Thaddeus Stevens Facility, Jasmine Near Campus Project in Sheridan, McKinley Rec Center in Beltsuver, Phillips Rec Center in Southside, Hazelwood Senior Center, the Jefferson Rec Center, Robert E. Williams, West Penn Marshall Mansion Facility, and the Paulson Rec Center, so that all residents have somewhere safe to go and be off of the streets. We're also sending $17.5 million over to PWSA, as already mentioned, to help with lead line replacement. This is also so PWSA does not have to increase your rates. Dedicating $17 million means that we're going to ensure clean, safe, affordable drinking water for our residents, but it also ensures that you're not, your increases are not being increased, because if we don't provide PWSA with this funding, they would essentially be taking out a loan, and then in order to pay that loan back, they would increase your rates. So we're trying to keep your rates down while also addressing clean water and lead line replacement. We're then sending approximately $75 million to our Urban Redevelopment Authority. And we believe that's really critical for a number of reasons. One, we want to ensure that everyone, regardless of your income, has a decent, affordable, safe place to live. And we also want to move as many people as possible into homeownership. So we're going to be dedicating $22 million to Own PGH. Own PGH is an initiative at the URA, which will renovate vacant homes and sell them to residents and families with low and moderate income to foster new homeownership. In addition to that, we are sending $5 million to the URA to preserve affordable housing. Affordable housing, building new, is extremely expensive. It's even more expensive coming out of COVID, as prices for lumber and everything else have gone up 200%. So we can't build our way out of an affordable housing crisis. We must preserve as much as possible, renovate as much as possible. And so, we will be sending $5 million to the URA to save existing affordable housing, because it is less expensive to preserve a housing than it is to build. We also are dedicating $5 million to establishing and expanding community land trust. This is so that the community can actually own the land and not developers owning land and selling it to you. It also allocates an additional $10 million to help homeowners with, not with the utility, but one of the things we discovered in underserved communities, we're often paying higher utility bills, higher bills related to energy efficiency, our windows are older, our roof has a leak, things of that nature. And so, this additional $10 million will actually help people fix the dormer, repair the roof, put new windows in there, get energy-efficient things into their homes, so that you're lowering your utility bills, and thus able to also stay in your home longer. We then, I mentioned that one, also, part of what we want to do is increase black wealth. And through the ARP dollars, we're dedicating $7 million to rebuild black business districts across the City of Pittsburgh. This will be to assist minority business owners who want to open a new business. This could help renovate an existing business's storefront. It could do a lot of things, but we've identified the Hill District and Center Avenue, the Center Avenue in the Hill District, excuse me, Charter's Avenue in Sheridan/Charter City, North Homewood in Frankstown Avenue in Homewood, Irvin Street/Second Avenue in Hazelwood, Larimer Avenue in Larimer, and Perry'sville Avenue in the Perry North-South Hilltop area, and then lastly, West Warrington Avenue in Beltsuver and Allentown. And this is to directly invest in black entrepreneurship, black businesses. Lastly, we are putting $2.5 million into one PGH. One PGH is the basic guaranteed income initiative that Reverend Burgess mentioned. The reason why we're doing this, per state law, I cannot simply give you $500, the way we operate. The City of Pittsburgh literally cannot just write you a check, say, here's your guaranteed income. It must go through a nonprofit entity that will then write that check and give the $500. So we're putting $2.5 million into that nonprofit that will then be responsible for writing that, writing that check. It also goes to leverage grant money that we're also receiving for this initiative. And so, those are the various ways that we believe that we have created an Equity First Investment Plan for the use of our dollars. And to Reverend Burgess's earlier point, there's also a white handout that will detail every, every line item and every spending. With that, I believe I'm turning it over to our president to lead us in questions and answers.
Thank you both so much for your great presentation and for explaining a lot of the details. With that said, we're going to begin with our registered speakers, and you can take the mic if you want and stay seated and, oh, I'm sorry, you're going to bring it over to them? The clerk's office will bring it over to you. And after we go through our list of registered speakers, we'll open it up to additional comments. And then let me just say this, if council members do not answer during the time, or they feel like they want to have a further discussion, a few of us will stick around after the meeting so that we can have more in-depth conversations. With that said, we'll begin with Mark Brentley, Sr. Good evening, Mr. Brentley.
I need it.
Yeah, we need it before the recording purpose.
All right, okay. Mark Brentley, Sr., former member of the Pittsburgh School Board. I served 16 years. And Madam President, I remind folks, every time I speak publicly, you and I go way back. But I just want to say, first, I had to check my phone to make sure I was in the right meeting, okay? This is a question of process, not about line items and what we're doing and how wonderful and how hard we work. This is process. Madam President, what happened was, what we're trying to do now is to put the toothpaste back in the tube. You made decisions, you voted, you've allocated, you've discussed. You keep using the word phrase, or the phrase "we." We believe "we" means council and the people. You left us out. And so, I'm only here for one reason, and that is to respectfully say to my friend, Council President Teresa, it is time that we see real leadership, and the only thing left to do is for you, along with the mayor of this city, to have a press conference and to publicly announce, and just simply say, oops, we made a mistake, we forgot the people, we reallocated, we rethought some things, we are wrong. We are now asking for the opportunity to rescind that vote and do it the right way, because this process has been so divisive. We have some on this side and some on that side, and it's just unfair to do. I mean, out of all the things that we need to continue to divide each other over, we don't need another item. Councilman Burgess and Councilman Lavelle, out of all due respect, you know, I respect both of you guys, but somewhat insulted on your presentation. We have this information, we are aware of it. We need process, man. I need healing. I don't want to fight with folks on the South Side again, okay? And I don't want to fight over race, and I don't want to fight over haves and haves nights, nothing. So the opportunity of simply going back and doing things the way they're supposed to be done, that's not an unreasonable request to make, Madam President. That's the only reason why I'm here. And so, after that, I'm out, because this other stuff is not related. So I, and so I'm asking you, please, if you're going to respond to anything, will you have a press conference with the president, with the mayor, and simply to say, we made a mistake? Hey, I was a president, I was a member of the school board. We made these mistakes several times, closed these schools, oops, we forgot that one needed this, we needed, and we, we went to the public and we, we readjusted. And that's where we are, because we can't continue to go back. I'm tired of fighting other Pittsburghers. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you.
I will answer directly, Mark. Mark and I, we also go back. Here's what I think is true. We don't think we made a mistake. We absolutely, and Councilman Lavelle and I, along with the president, was part of the negotiations to decide how this money was going to be spent and then sent it to council. We agreed to do this. Now, I think two things are true. And I told everyone who will listen, I think a better use of time, instead of telling us use of time, instead of telling us that we're wrong, is to say what you want to see done. And we'll join with you to try, in terms of projects, trying to decide what, because there are a variety of ways we can work with you. Like I told you, the human services dollars are not in the city, they're in the county. So there's nothing that stops us from working with us to get human services dollars from the county, to get invested in community groups, local communities. And so I think that the way, and that's number one. So the first path for it is for those of you who have differing ideas that would need to be done, we're willing to partner with you to do those things, right? I think that's, I think that's number one. The second thing, which I said from the very beginning that I think people don't quite understand, is that this money is not spent separately. For the most part, it's put into the budget. Our budget comes out in about two months or a month and so, and then that has a whole community engagement process by itself. So there are a variety of ways which the community can participate, can give their suggestions, vocalize their dissent, and still have a chance for that process to be changed. So there are a variety of votes we have to do because all, none of this money has been voted on yet. This is, all you think has been voted on is this is the budget. This is how council thinks it should be done. Now, going forward, there'll be a variety of votes on actually implementing those funds. Did I say that right? Okay, so I just wanted to, that's what I think, Mark, and we could talk more later or you can call me directly. I think you have my cell phone number.
Can I just agree to that? And I appreciate that compliment, but it is a little unfair for you to tell us while we're here, putting you in check. You go to the county, go over there, fight for some day of money. No, sir. I have a better feeling than influencing nine versus 13 members of council. You are my, you are my local folks, and you are here where I can put hands on, and it's much more personal, you know? And secondly, remember, since this thing started about a month and a half ago, three African Americans have been shot down in the streets. And we have access to money to possibly change some of that. And so to find out that you can do because you know best what's in our community versus getting me involved, takes me to a level of anger, which I'm going to leave, okay? Because we're tired of burying our kids, okay? When we have a chance to make some changes and it doesn't appear to be of importance to some of you here, but for some of us, the pain is deep, okay? So I'm disappointed, but nevertheless, it is what it is.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, Madam Clerk, could you maybe sit up here a little bit so people can see when you raise your hand that the time is up, so people know? If you could sit in front so people can see. So when you're speaking, you have to look at council, so maybe you watch, Madam Clerk, when she raises her, the white, when she raises this white, your time is up. I don't, I'm trying not to shut people off because I know that this is important, but your time is up. And then if you have something to say back, we'll give you 30 seconds or one minute, and then we'll give you 30 seconds to respond back to council members. With that said, do you have anything else you want to add? No? He left? Okay. Well, and with that said, I'm just going to add that there are some things in here to help with crime and deterrence, and especially with the violence in the city of Pittsburgh. And some of those things are the community center that will be at the Stevens School Building, and the Jasmine and Irie Campus in Sheridan, and programs like that, that we've also funded, jobs and job creations, and other things in the budget that will help, you know, help with, with violence in the city of Pittsburgh, hopefully, put people on a different path. And there's a lot of resources. So I do, I do want to make sure that I mention that there are some things that we did think of and we included in this budget. So with that said, we'll go to our next speaker is Ian Branch Robinson. Hi, how are you? Thanks for joining us. Could you have a mic, please? Thank you. Okay, remember the rules when the clerk waves the white paper, time's up, and then we'll, then we'll respond. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. In my 30 years of actually living in Pittsburgh, I actually never had a chance to speak. Coming into the enlightenment of the culture and history of my ancestors created joyously, living harmoniously upon our ancestral lands known as the Americas or PA or Pennsylvania, where the Delaware Treaty was signed, actually. Then I look around and I see and I witness that the genocide, the colonization, and the eugenics forcefully assimilating our people to no end. And we've healed immigrants' diseases known as the Black Plague, and we don't have a holistic hospital, for that matter, in this area, the city of Pittsburgh, that does not assimilate, discriminate, try to force our people to give up our rights in order to get treated. We cannot grow food without being discriminated against or municipalities using codes and not law, which was built a ground or great law, and that they live on a daily basis. Our women, our lingages give birth. Hmm. Thank you.
Yeah, that minute goes fast. Did you want to wrap up your thought, though? Do you want to wrap up your thought, please? No?
Our women and our lingages give birth, and we, and they sign, not we, because I can't give birth, and they sign away their kids on a daily basis. They sign away their rights to identify themselves when they get, when people get married, and they don't know it. People force the term black or African American on people when they're going through the judicial system. When you try to talk to people that are supposed to say, they say that, or they're supposed to protect us, but they're really only supposed to uphold codes that are from the corporations, et cetera, not supposed to actually protect us in no type of way. But we answer to them and they pull us over, and they discriminate against us. I'm just confused because we have no education system to teach us of our history in no type of way. There's no judges, and there's nobody that's going to uphold our law. And whenever we try to uphold our international law of the Organization of American States that the, that the United States is actually a part of, and these laws, these international laws are passed down through Congress, et cetera, I'm just confused on how we are not acknowledged in any of this. When we try to stand up for our laws by ourselves because it is of our own virtue and of our own strength that we have to stand up for our laws in order to get accepted because of our lineage and our ancestors' mistakes back then because they could not have read this English language, which is used for commerce, I'm just confused on how there is no, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no reform in here for us. Not health, there's not education, there's no, not for judicial or criminal, there's... I'm confused on why we are signing over infants to, to things and that are considered to be called cattle. I found out that my great-great-grandmother was forced to give up her lands, and she was called cattle and owned by the state of Maine. It's on her birth, it's on her death certificate. It's just, I'm just confused. These are acts of servitude and genocide, and these are, these are acts that are, that are supposed to be not continued and we're supposed to be suppressed and acts we're supposed to be forgiven. But there is no, how can we, how can we, yeah, how can we actually continue to or even start to live our life culturally, historically, by our ancestors, which gave y'all your own constitution, and we can't even live our lives? We cannot express ourselves in no type, shape, or form in this area.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And Ikahana Halmaquina.
Greetings of peace, light, and love in la kesha la kein, which means the light in me honors the light in you. My title is Ikahana Halmaquina. I am the Grand Inca of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal and the American People. It is my great pleasure to be among those who are expressing their concerns publicly and letting your voices be heard in this space and giving your input on how you think the funds for the American Rescue Plan should be spent. On behalf of my ancestors, I must remind you that this is stolen land. This is the land of the Aboriginal and American people, known as Indians, to whom and which I descend. And the city of Pittsburgh incorporated in 1816, which is a little over 200 years ago, directly benefits as a result of a long history of official depredations and ill-conceived policies. And it's time for city council and the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh to use this unique opportunity to allocate funds to restitution to begin a step forward in remedying the necessary and righting the necessary wrongs that have gone on, as spelled out in the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People and the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People. These funds can be used to redevelop our sacred lands and continue to allow us to create programs for the youth, develop opportunities for communities, cultural centers, a food resource center to address food insecurity, large community gardens, create affordable housing, river restoration, address air quality, recycling programs, and to restore some of the rec centers not mentioned in your presentation, to reintroduce tech training in schools, and to encourage the youth so they can have a brighter future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to add that some of those things are in here and that you did talk to Director Edwards, who we're joined with tonight as well during the last meeting. So hopefully we'll be able to...
I just have one question, if you don't mind, Madam. You mentioned single mothers, and I side with Mark Brentley that in this equation, thank you, in this equation, a lot of times it's the men who are out here causing the violence. What are you going to do to directly engage them, to directly impact them? You're giving $500 a month to them, and I've talked to some of these gentlemen. I go up to them in the streets and say, what is it that you need? What will make you change your ways? You know, a lot of them don't have places to go. They don't have anywhere to live. They're out here starving wolves, and we're out here being their prey. And it's not going to be long before it directly affects one of your family members. And then and only then will you really decide that, okay, enough is enough, we need to do something. Don't wait until it's one of your family members. Do something now. You have this unique opportunity. Don't just do single mothers. Single mothers have been given a path for a long time. What about the brothers out here? Come on, brothers.
I want to respond to that first, and then I must just say that we did include some of that in this plan with the workforce development and the job opportunities, expanding the Office of Community Health and Safety, I think that's what it's called, Community Health and Safety, and the police community substations, which will address some of the crime in the area. But we did, we did try to do something in terms of the jobs creations and the mental health and services that are needed. And I don't know if you guys want to add anything to that.
Remember, and this is, I said before, remember that there's a whole budget, this is just part of the city budget. We already, Councilman Lavelle and I, introduced legislation was passed that takes a percentage of the police budget into a special fund that's just used for violence prevention, and that goes up a percentage every year. It started off, I believe, at 3%, Sean?
5%.
5%, but it goes up every year another percent. I think this year the number was $7 million, and next year it'll be like $9 million. So that's, that's not included in here, but that's part of the city budget every year. We have moneyed, and Mark left before we could explain this, we have money increasing every year specifically for violence prevention, for opportunities to get brothers employed, and to find employers that will employ brothers with criminal record, criminal backgrounds, and low skill level. So we are working on that, that even though you don't see this, it's, when you look at the overall city budget, it's absolutely part of our budget.
But thank you, because you are raising some great questions and great points tonight. So now we have one last speaker, Kamara Harris, Harrison. Hi, honey. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, my name is Kamari Harrison. I'm 11 years old. I live at Homewood. I would like to thank the members of city council for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to tell each one of you how you should spend $335 million. First, I would build houses for homeless people. Second, make camp free and fun. Third, fix rec centers. Fourth, create programs for youth to learn trades, for example, fixing cars, building houses, technology science home act. Five, improve playgrounds, keep them safe. Six, create scholarships for college. Seven, create a youth-based campaign to rec, to recycle and keep our city clean. Eight, give people like myself the opportunity to start my own business so I can create generational wealth in my family. I would like to start my own clothing line, but don't have the funds to do so. $335 million is a lot. Imagine how many lives can be changed in this money spent correctly.
I'm, Reverend, I think you, do you hear what Reverend said? Say it again.
That's right. No, I think every single thing you listed down is right, some of which you listed we are absolutely committed to doing, some of which is actually in this budget. More so, some of what you also mentioned, so as an example, you mentioned you wanted to start a business. That's not necessarily what the city does, but there are agencies that can help you start a business, even at the URA, where we're sending a lot of our money. They have programs, like they have a program called Catapult that is specifically designed. They're currently operating out of Reverend Burgess's district in East Liberty. We're going, we're getting ready to open another one in the Hill District, but it's specifically designed to help people start their own businesses. So what you, what you wrote down is absolutely correct on every single level, much of which is already in our budget. And what I would ask, if you'd be so willing, is if you would leave a copy of your statement with our city clerk so that we can then formally respond to you. But thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Hi, Kamari. Thank you for your comments. I second that, that I agree with everything that you said. And the only thing I wanted to add was that if you or you know of others who are truly interested in a, in a youth-based campaign to increase recycling, to think about the way that we use, consume, throw away things, pick up litter, all of that, that's, that's something I'm working on. So I would love to work with you and any friends and other young people on that, and I'll give you my card, my information so that we can follow up on that, in addition to responding to your comments. Thank you for being here.
Hey, folks, I'm Councilman Anthony Coghill. Good to be here in the West End. I'm no stranger to Councilwoman Kail Smith's district. Kamara, I'll tell you what you said about jobs, training, trades, that hits home with me big time because I feel way out of poverty are good-paying jobs. I think investing in good-paying jobs and trades are, I couldn't agree more with you there, okay? So I will work with you on that. In fact, we're trying to get a trades show or, you know, job fair, whatever name you want to use for it, where we can introduce people into the trades. I'm in the trades myself, have been for 30 years, so, you know, you can make a good living if you learn the right job. So thank you for your question. If I could just be clear on the process, you know, you know, I'm sorry, the gentleman that left.
Mark Brentley.
Okay, Mr. Brentley had left, but I just want to say this about the process. I've gotten a number of phone calls through my own district, and I've heard all the calls that come into city council. Our job, I feel, is the stewards of the money. We vote on a budget every year. Public input is great. I get public input. I get it on a daily basis in my neighborhoods. And I'll tell you, it's not what other, the people have been calling in about. My issues are more surrounded of infrastructure. It's, you know, paving roads, fixing sidewalks, trees, you name it, abandoned buildings, abandoned lots, as Councilman Lavelle was speaking to. So I don't feel a public process, I go through the public process, and I probably think every council member does in their own neighborhood to a certain degree, just hearing back from, from their constituents. So I don't think we could ever come on, come to a consensus as to exactly which, how every dollar should be spent. My district is completely different than the callers that have been calling in on a regular basis. So, so I feel like that is our job. So I feel like that is our job. It's a big responsibility for us, and if we don't come through for our constituents, then they have the opportunity to vote us out of office. And, you know, that's what we will be judged on. So I love hearing from the public. There are many needs in all the districts, but I just wanted to give you my take on that as it is. I will say this about the mayor's plan, like most of you, I have a lot of things that I would change about it. And two in particular was PWSA. I just thought there was a lot of money going to the water company that does not serve my district, and the other thing was the land bank. But after having conversations with Director Gilman or Chief Gilman and the administration, the PWSA, you know, what really sold me on PWSA is the debt that we're going to save. They are a city entity, and, you know, ultimately, we're one city, and I look for the city, I'm for the Pittsburgh first, and then my district second. But the amount of debt that we're going to save PWSA is going to benefit everybody in the end. You know, I tend to focus on infrastructure. Infrastructure, I feel, is for everybody. You know, it's long-lasting. I felt the mayor's plan in the end, as again, I would have probably made some changes, but in the end, it was responsible, thoughtful, inequitable. Hey, my man over here got a little extra time. You're going to stick up for me, right? So I just wanted to give you, add my thoughts to that. That's the way I feel about the budget. Everything's subject to change, of course.
Thank you. Thank you. But Kamari, I'm just going to say, do you know how many people it takes, how many members of council it takes to pass something? It's five. And it seems like here tonight, you've got five votes to work with you and do some of the things you want to see done. So that was pretty good, okay? And we're all willing to work with you, and I'll take Councilwoman Strasburg's lead on this. I actually started the anti-litter campaign in the City of Pittsburgh, and I started it with a young boy in Sheridan, who did a sample program, a pilot program. So hopefully now you'll take that and add lots, a lot of kids to that project. With that said, we're done with our list of registered speakers.
There should be one more registered speaker. She registered.
Well, she doesn't have to be registered. I'm going to say, if people would like to speak, could you raise your hand if you'd like to speak, so we can know who to take the mic to? Okay, we'll start with Director Edwards, and then we'll come down to here, and then we'll go around this way. Does that sound good? Okay. One minute, yeah.
I want to say the same thing I did Monday. Thank you all for listening, because that's a hot seat. I know what it feels like to be there, but I also know what it feels like to serve the people and do what's best for them. Reverend Burgess, when I hear you talk about how we're going to put everything together to help kids educationally, through the community, through the churches, through the citizens, through mentoring, it can be done, but it still takes a village. So we need to bring our village together. And for the crime, which is immediate, that's what we're facing immediately. I just think we should do something immediately. Schools getting ready to start again. Maybe there should be a curfew for 17 and under. We should look at that gun task force. Who's bringing these guns? They're coming out of trunks, they're not being bought in stores. We need to find out where these guns are coming from. And if those funds that can be allocated to do something to help young people and families immediately, what can we do? Not just single females, but what can we do in our communities to start to deal with the issues of crime? And that's where I am. So I thank you. I thank you for another opportunity.
I thank you, Director Edwards, for being here for the meeting the other day and for your work with our students. Do you want to go next? Do you have your hand up? Yes. Wait, let's get you a mic. Let's get you a mic.
Yes, my name is Brandy Anderson. I live in Beltsuer. We have a lot of community, I mean, a lot of deaths in the community. I work at the Top Park with Richie Carrington, and I have 24 chickens, and my daughter, it's called Brown Grow Eggs. And I'm trying to incorporate the people, the community, to help me with my urban garden, urban garden. And just because a lot of the kids, there's a lot of gun violence, a lot of kids are hanging out, and I work at the rec, and I'm just trying to see if I can, like, talk to somebody in the city that can help me make my program a little bigger for my neighborhood, because a lot of kids, they, they're like, you have chickens, and they're like, wow, they're like, wow, it's like a farm, but it's in a city. But it takes them away from the violence for a little while, and they could just sit back there, learn about chickens. I teach them, they feed them, you know. I'm just trying to, like, develop some type of plan, like a program, because I work with a lot of the youth. But that's all I have to say.
So I'm going to respond to that. We actually have some farmers, local farmers here in our district. One is Farmer Girl Eb, who just opened a store around the corner.
That's one, I went to Oliver High School with her.
Did you go to school with her? She's amazing.
Yes, and she sells, she sells a lot of my eggs in her store for me.
Does she, I bought them. So she sells a lot of stuff there. I didn't know whose they were. But can I just say that I think that maybe getting, I know that there's a lot of opportunity for people to work together on this, but I know that we would love to work with you on this. So I don't know of other members, but we can connect you to some help. So if you wait till after the meeting, we'll give you our cards and try to help you build that up, because I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you. Anybody else want to respond? Oh, wait, Anthony Coghill wants to respond?
What is your name again?
Brandy Anderson.
Brandy, Brandy, I want to see your place, okay? Myself and another council person that's not here tonight, we, and Councilwoman Kail Smith as well.
He's actually wrote the letter.
Right, that's right, that's right. No, we started the thing, Little City Farms, and we're promoting people to grow food, and whether it's an abandoned lot or a piece of grass that's owned by the city.
Right, because there's a lot of abandoned...
Yeah, oh, there's a ton of them.
Places by my house.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to buy this one house so I can expand my chickens.
Are you growing food?
I have a lot of chickens, brown chickens.
Okay, but you're not growing food.
Well, I grow my vegetables, just because every summer, that's what I do.
Right, 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 okay.
But I'm promoting, like, the brown, organic, healthy eggs.
Got it.
Because we feed them organically, they eat a lot of vegetables and grains.
Okay.
And they're not pasteurized, and they're healthy, they're something that people need to eat.
Okay.
They're way better than the white eggs.
I don't deal with the chickens, but when you start growing food, I want to see what you've got, all right?
Anybody else want to say anything?
There's nothing wrong with chickens.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lea, I didn't see you.
Chicken people can call.
Good evening. I just have a question. I work with the homeless, I'm a manager at a nonprofit, and I notice in other communities, I notice new development housing that has came up, and I have not, I live in, I live in Chartiers, but I notice, I haven't noticed anything in the West Side, no kind of affordable housing. They demolish pretty much Broadhead, and I understand that they're going to take away Ferrywood. I'm not sure if that's true or not. But is there any plans for any new development housing in this area? And what this young lady said about the homeless population, I know they're building a shelter, but is there any kind of other type of transitional housing, something for the homeless?
I can answer that, because that's my district, so I can answer. And so down in Ferrywood, first of all, I don't know where you heard that about abolishing Ferrywood. I mean, it's, I don't know where that came from, but that's not true. What they are doing in Ferrywood is actually building up low-income housing in Ferrywood. There's a development, they already, the community selected the developer, and they sat on the panel with the URA. David, did you, Geiger, is he here? Did you want to talk about that, the housing over what this Ferrywood school is? But what it is, is it's low-income housing for seniors that's going to be built. And just so to be clear, our district actually has an overabundance of affordable housing according to the Affordable Housing Task Force, the study that they did. So we actually have to, but some of it's uninhabitable. So we're trying to, we're trying to rehab some houses in our district, and we're doing that a lot with Richard Snipe in Sheridan and Elliott in Crafton Heights, in different places in our district, and some in Shorter City. So he's working all over. But what I will say is that there's a lot of efforts to rehab some homes, but so that we can make them livable, but there's also new development happening too. And with the development that's happening in the West End, we worked with him to put, even though it was market rate, he agreed to put in 10% of low-income housing as well. So I'm going to, let's see if David wants to clarify or say anything.
David Geiger with the URA, and the project that Council President Kail Smith is talking about is at the former Ferrywood school site. We are working with a developer who has an application into the PHFA for a 9% low-income housing tax credit. We're expecting those awards to come within the next month, and we're very positive that it will get awarded and constructed within the next couple of years. I also think to Council President's point about the amount of affordable housing potential within the West End, the OwnPGH program that we discussed that will get funding this evening, hopefully a significant amount of those funds will go into houses that get rehabbed here in the West End.
And also, one of the projects in the West End, we agreed to, that they would give $200,000 to the community, and that's supposed to be the first project that takes off, whether it's the...
Industrial site or the housing, yeah. That will have some funding for community improvements, absolutely. Yep.
I have two questions.
Could you, wait, could you just wait for the mic? And then could you also say your name and neighborhood, just for the record?
My name is Kia Ingram, and I live in Wind Gap, Chartiers area. I have, so I have two questions. One is, is there like a public report or something that's out for residents to see? You guys said there's like a violence prevention program, to see how that's working, because I know, like, for the last couple of months, this month, it's been kind of quiet, but someone was killed every single solitary day, every single day. It was nonstop. I have a nonprofit organization called Cultivating Resilient Youth, and I have a girls' program called FIA, Fairly Inspired Young Adults, but I also work very heavily with the young men and the women. I've done several community meetings with boys who were shooting at each other. We were able to get them to stop shooting at one another. I provide food, we do, I'll be here all day. So we do a lot of different things in the community, especially with the youth. So I wanted to know, is there some type of public report to show that that's working or where it needs tweaked at, and how, there's a couple of organizations that are directly working with youth that aren't a part of the process, to see how they can be implemented, because they have huge impacts. One Nation works very heavy over here with our students in the West End. They and I partner together. So there's a lot of different organizations. So is there something out there so we can make sure holistically we're taking care of the kids and not just in pockets? That's the first thing. And also, I wanted to know, how do we get the information about these meetings out? I was at the ribbon cutting, but I hadn't heard any more information until today, and I got it from the, I'm part of the Windshar Civics Association, and they sent out the information today. So making sure that as a community, especially working directly with the kids and the community, that we're a part of the process, making sure that the needs are being met of the children and the communities and the family members that are here, and also the organizations that need support to pour back into the community.
So there are, that's your first question. First of all, thank you for your work. I've spent probably half my life on council trying to figure out the gun stuff and the gun violence. I am directly affected by gun violence in my life and in my family, and so I have a heart for it. So I think three things. First of all, we started a number of programming to reduce the violence. It actually worked, and we reduced violence to the lowest levels in 10, 12 years, probably two years ago. So we kind of know what works, that's first of all. So, and there are reports that document the success of the programs we previously did. They're available in a couple of different places. Second of all, there is going to be, in the next few months, an RFP that the city releases for groups like yours to partner with us, and we will help fund these anti-violence programs in the local community level. So some of the dollars that I talked about earlier, that was in the 2021 budget, already allocated, and that will be in the 2022 budget, are funds that the city won't spend, but rather, we haven't picked the agency, but there'll be an agency that will then directly fund organizations like you that are doing the work on the ground. And so they will probably come out, I'm guessing, we're going to pick the agency first, that's, they're doing that, we're doing that now. So I'm assuming in the next couple of months, once the agency's picked, those RFPs will go out, and there'll be, if you keep giving us your information, we'll make sure that you're directly getting notice when those opportunities to fund directly, to receive funding directly. Third of all, the recent uptick in violence is nationwide. It's unfortunate. We think it has, COVID has a little something to do with it. We also think that the, that part of the things that happened during the Donald Trump era and COVID was some of the largest buying of guns in the history of our country. More guns were sold during that small period of time that has been the largest concentration of gun buys. Unfortunately, because there's so many guns now on the street, those guns get into our community by store purchasers, by drug trade, and so we have, there is so much ammunition now on the streets because so much guns were bought by the larger community, some of that now is filtering into, into the local neighborhood. At the end of the day, and this is something that I want to work with, but we kind of, it's something I think you were saying, that I agree with 100%. And I've been saying this for maybe 20, 15 years. If we could get 1,000 jobs, if I could get 1,000 jobs making a living wage where people with criminal backgrounds could have, and that, that they had, they didn't need a lot of skills, right? They could be trained. If I had about 1,000 jobs where I could guarantee these guys, mostly guys, some women, that they could make a living wage job, right? But the amount of money that would take, there's no resources to do that, right? There are here and there agencies to do that. We don't have a big place to do it to make it sustainable. And that's really, long-term, what we have to figure out. We have to figure out ways to get these, these, these highly active young people who are committing crimes to change their ways and provide them with ways to provide for their families, because they're going to provide for their families, right? They're going one way or another. So we have to figure out a way, and government is not really the best venue for that, because our funds are limited. It's really the private sector. So we have to figure out, and we've been talking about that, we have to figure out a way that we can create a pipeline of employment for young, particularly African-American men who are, who have criminal backgrounds and who are doing wrong things. I don't have, I don't, I wish I had the answer of how to do it. I do know that's the answer, and I've been advocating for it, working for it, trying to do it, little bit at a time, little bit at a time, little bit at a time. And so that's, and hopefully I've answered your questions.
I was just going to say, please make sure you leave us your information. There's also a newsletter. Okay, there's, well, we need to make sure, there's a newsletter that comes out that details what our group violence intervention work is being done. It talks about violence prevention initiatives that are happening around the city. So we just need to make sure you get in that, that space as well, so that you're equally informed about all that's happening.
Thank you.
Send her information to Jake Gilman, Teresa.
Okay. I'll get you Jacob in a second.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for what you do. To me, you can count on me to direct resources into what I call, you're on the front line. You know, when you're seeing kids who are at risk, no better way to get to a kid than, you know, somebody like you who's dealing and working with them and knowing their families and knowing things about them. So always counting that for me. This goes back to what Kamara said and what Reverend Burgess was just saying, you know, ultimately, I feel good-paying jobs are a way out, you know? And we have to, you know, I work with the Builders Guild, and I work with a lot of trades, and we have to get into the inner city and provide people with the opportunity for those jobs.
Thank you. Jacob, you're next. Sorry.
Hi, Jacob Williamson. I live in Crafton Heights. I have three, hopefully, quick questions. Councilman Lavelle, you mentioned that there is $2 million being allocated to tear down properties that need to be torn down. I understand that it takes about $40,000 to do that, so that's really only 50 properties. And you had mentioned that there are thousands, so I'm just curious why $2 million is the mark and not more. I understand that there's only so much money in there, but $2 million doesn't, yeah, $2 million doesn't seem to be like a lot of money.
I wish I knew it off the top of my head. I don't. If you knew what we currently spend on demolition, you would think $2 million is a ton of money that we're actually putting towards demolition. At the end of the day, it's a matter of priority. It's a matter of how are we prioritizing, what's more... It's a matter of how are we prioritizing what's most important? What I will tell you, this is an issue that council has been recently debating amongst ourselves over the last month or two, and we're getting ready to plan a number of post-agendas to actually discuss demolition. There are also those of us who have been looking for initiatives where we don't necessarily have to demo, but rather, how can we stabilize a lot of the property? Because so much of the property, many, many of the condemned properties that are on our condemned property list aren't necessarily in need of immediate demolition, but if we stabilize them, we would then have solid structures that could then be affordable housing opportunities on the back end. And so we're having that conversation now. The 10 million that we're also sending to the land bank is going to be able to assist in that, and part, as part of that conversation as well. But at the end of the day, I mean, to be candid, it's a matter of how are you prioritizing everything that need, get needed, needs done in the city, and that's where demolition was, in part because we have a number of colleagues, Councilman Calkiel, Teresa, being some, who have advocated for more money for demolition than what we currently allocate in our current budget process. You know, 2 million, I'm sorry, is above and beyond what we normally advocate. So we still have one line item in our budget for demolition, this is on, in addition to that.
You actually raised my second question, in that what's the process, and if this isn't the space for this, that's okay, but I'm curious what the process is to identify those properties that don't actually need to be torn down, but that could be rehabbed?
So, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, at the city level, we don't currently have a process whereby we go through and identify every property that could be stabilized versus demolition, because we don't do the stabilization work. We're trying to figure out how we can get into that space. The Office of, shoot, it used to be BBI, Bureau of Inspection, they're, they are responsible for going around and identifying condemned structures. And so they identify it as simply condemned. Now whether or not it can be stabilized or demoed is another subject. We did recently, as I'm thinking out loud, we actually did just enter, walk into a pilot initiative. I'm trying to think, who are we doing it with?
Construction?
Yes. So we're-
Church Junction.
So we just entered into a pilot initiative with Construction Junction around trying to identify properties that can be deconstructed. And so hopefully that will then lead into also the whole conversation around what structures could also be stabilized. And I'm hoping the land bank will also play a role in that as well. But one, one of the challenges, I have looked into this in the past, was when I initially looked into it, we were looking to use CDBG dollars for that purpose, but CDBG dollars have a very specific purpose, and if we couldn't guarantee that the end user was a, was in the CDBG eligible criteria, then we may run foul of federal law, and then we run the possibility of having to actually get fined and return money and not get the CDBG dollars. So it's a very complicated space that we are actively now trying to work through.
I want to add to that, thank you. Thank you, I just want to add to that, that we do have Richard Snipe with the, was it Pittsburgh Housing Development Corporation, and he works with, in our district, he's working with a group of residents from Elliot, a group of residents from Sheridan, a group of residents from Crafton, it's different neighborhoods that he's working in, and they help identify which houses are a priority and which houses they can rehabilitate. That's what I was asking you, David, if you could address, but, so they are working on that. But he also needs additional money to do some of that, so that's, that's a, also a priority for me for the 2022 budget.
May I ask my third question? It'll be very quick. I'm really happy to see that the Office of Community Health and Safety, at the bottom of page one on the white sheet, is, is getting $10 million. I think that's the most important office in the city of Pittsburgh right now. I'm just curious if they have any idea how they're going to spend it with this partnership with A- Allegheny Health Network?
I know a little bit of it, and you may know something about it, Eric, too. One of the things that has been very successful in other cities is embedding social workers with police officers, right? And that in some of the calls, the social worker actually goes in first, or the police officer stays in the car, or, that, we're trying, that, that's, I know a chunk of that money will be, there was a pilot program in Zone 5, I believe, and I know a chunk of that money will take that pilot program and expand it citywide. So that there'll be social workers in all of the zones to work hand in hand. In other cities, they don't sit, in certain calls, they don't send police at all. It comes to 911, it goes through the regular call process, and then the dispatcher determines by the call whether a social worker goes, whether the police officer goes. Right now, if you call 911, no matter what your problem is, the only person we can send to you is a police officer. But that's who, because that's, that's who's coming. And so the idea is to provide a variety of interventions where police is just one of those interventions. So that program, I know is part of this, it may be the bulk of it. That program that was started in the, the District Zone 5 is going to be now employed citywide.
Thank you, you want to add to it?
Sure, and I was looking for the press release. There are a set of press releases that have come out recently in the city. If you go to just the PittsburghPay.gov, find the press releases. One was announcing Community Health and Safety was selected to develop a crisis response and intervention team co-response model. So that's co-response, which you just heard about. They're also working, they have some positions that are going to be paid for actually by the Allegheny County Health Department, two positions for the city of Pittsburgh that are paid for by the county to be social workers, and they're working to develop, because I don't think they want it to be so insular, they want it to be, you know, hand in glove with the community. So as far as I understand it, working on kind of community, neighborhood-based systems, so that, you know, in the ideal world, as it's described by Laura Dragowski, and she would be the person to talk to at the city, you would, instead of always having to call 911, because, right, 911, we have to respond to every single call. We don't have a choice. The city, whether it's, you know, with this bureau or that bureau, if public safety has to respond to every call. Some of them aren't, frankly, aren't warranted. If you could decrease the number of 911 calls, then our, our police, our EMS could be better utilized, or could go to the emergency faster, or not respond to so many calls. So let's just say that if you, if there was, say, a disagreement between two people, and instead of immediately calling 911, they knew to call the trusted source who was trained by the social worker and had the social worker who works for the city at, at their phone, you know, on their phone number and speed dial, and this trained community member was a trusted member who, who could be called before it gets to a boiling point crisis, that's solving an issue upstream. And that is something that they're looking to get out into the communities, find these people who are interested in being those leaders, train them, and involve more of the, you know, the community that way. So I know that, that's, that's another initiative of this office, that if they, you know, they're looking to get off the ground and find people to partner with as well. But really, the best source of information would be Laura Dragowski, Laura Dragowski herself, who runs that office.
Jacob, I wanted to go back to demolition with you real quickly, okay? There are two forms of demolition, you know, city-owned properties that are not rehabbable. First of all, you brought up a very important point, who makes that decision? This is in my wheelhouse, I'm a contractor, I could look at a place, it all starts with the roof. And if the roof has been leaking and rotting, and, you know, everything below it goes with it. So we have to be very careful as to the properties that we pick to rehab, because you can get in a real nightmare in expense with a property you think is rehabbable, but isn't. I have more in my, my district is littered with privately-owned properties that are condemned, okay? For whatever reason, there's a thousand reasons. People, they don't even know they own them, people live in Israel, they're, they're all over the world. I've got dozens and dozens of them. They're falling to pieces. We try to contact the homeowner, we cite them, no response. And these have become havens. There's rats, God knows what's inside them, kids are going in them, you know, so, so they're really, I make a push to really, and, and after we're done with the city properties that, that need to come down, I would like a lot more money going into demolition for privately-owned condemned properties that we now have a right to take down if there's, put a time limit on, if we have not heard something for five years or 10 years, which I have many of them, take it down. Because people are much more happier with an empty lot than an abandoned building that's falling down. So I just wanted to address that, thanks.
And quickly, I found the name of it, it's called the Neighborhood Health and Safety Academy Pilot. It is going to be open to, the first pilot will be open to 20 residents, and they hope to expand it from there. But that's actually through a separate grant from the Stoughton Farm Foundation, $18,000, and we'll see how it goes, and if it goes well, you know, the city can, can allocate money towards expanding that pilot. It's called the Neighborhood Health and Safety Academy Pilot, yes.
And do we have Kelly, Kelly Frye?
Hi there. I wasn't planning on being here tonight, so forgive me, but I decided to come, and I'm so glad that I did. My name is Kelly Loon, I live in Elliot, been in West End for about 16 years now with our family. We love Elliot, I am pro-West End, I will always advocate for the West End, for our 21, 22 communities that we have here. And I feel so strongly about so many things that were mentioned tonight, and they're a passion of ours, but they're also like just weighing on us here in the West End, because I feel like the West End has been underserved, we don't have enough money coming in compared to the East Side, and the development, and the infrastructure funding, and the things that have gone into the East Side of this city. We have lived here, we've been in Mount Washington before, you know, we don't want to go anywhere, but it's so frustrating. Part of the reason, I was getting out of the shower, and to be honest, I was out picking out trash today, because our family goes out to pick up trash all the time. And I don't mean that to get a pat on the back, it is in part because I pray, as I walk around on these streets, not to feel hostile and angry that our streets are just a wreck, and people are trashing it, and blight, and infrastructure, and crumbling. And I literally have to pray for myself to go, we just got to keep moving, we got to be positive. If one person can just start to pick up, then maybe that'll start the string, maybe that'll be a positive. Talking to kids in the neighborhood, showing them something better. I had girls offering to come out and pick up trash with me, God love them. One's, you know, dad who's in jail, and the other one who lost her mother, and, you know, they want, they want to be plugged in, they want to be a community, but they're, they're literally, we're picking up Budweiser cans, and we're picking up stamp bags, and things like that. I mean, it's, it's, it's real in these neighborhoods. So my, my, my four things, and I'll be real quick, because I just wanted to say how passionate I am about all of this, and you, young lady, are amazing with the things that you brought up. I mean, just right on, I mean, really, it's just amazing to hear that from you. The four things that I thought about right away, and I'm going to be West End-centric, so forgive me for everybody else from your other neighborhoods, because I will always champion over here. Thaddeus Stevens, getting ready to redo that for the police, amen. That, you know, that's, the building, Teresa, as you know, sat there, you know, vacant for so long, and I love it that it's getting redone. My request would be for the whole property from Crucible all the way down to Sartiers Avenue to be maintained. I actually have pictures of the steps that I'm turning into 311 tomorrow, they're overgrown. You know, our division is great about coming to clean stuff up, but the trash and, and the maintenance is just overwhelming. So maybe more funding when it comes to city-owned properties, and, and the whole parcel needs to be redone and then maintained, like Thaddeus Stevens. The, and I love it, that that's going to be a really nice central area to keep the crime down and, and keep that area well-lit. Number two, when it comes to black business districts and the $7 million that's allocated, can we get the business district of Elliot, Lorenz, and Marlowe put on that list as well? You know, half those buildings are closed down, right at Lorenz and Marlowe and Elliot. We have the, the sub-shop, the dry cleaners is still, or the, the laundromat's still there, Elliot Market, but the flower shop's closed down, there's seven abandoned vehicles that have been on the other corner for, yeah.
All of Sartiers.
Yay. So, so Lorenz and Marlowe.
So I'm just saying Sartiers, all of Sartiers.
Okay.
We can look into it.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, that whole area is just so decrepit, there's a building that's been closed down for 10 years, boarded up one, one block back, and you can't do anything with it. We can't, you know, you can never get the property owner to, to either sell it, get out, or redo it. I mean, there's just no, there's no teeth in any of our laws to force these things, and that building's been abandoned for 15 years, I think, since we moved in, and nothing can be done. So Lorenz and Marlowe, I love that, you know, coming around, or not, Lorenz, Lorenz and Sartiers, excuse me, yeah. Yep, absolutely, if we can put that on the list. Okay, good, 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 I just want to make sure that that's on there, because I didn't see it on the list here. Which leads me to three, stronger code enforcement through 311, landlord enforcement, the West End, and I'm so glad you said that, we have so much blight, we have so much quote "affordable" housing, but what we say is it's substandard housing. People shouldn't be living in, in some of these homes, and the landlords are not being held accountable, certainly in the West End, to, to keep these places up. I mean, my goodness, there's a dumpster, and I don't want to say it publicly, but on Sartiers Avenue that is just, it's rancid, there are rats, and it's stuff dumped all over, and you turn it in, and nothing's ever done. So we need teeth. People shouldn't be living in that sort of substandard housing. Landlords need to be held accountable. Businesses need to be held accountable, too, to get a broom, just like they used to do in the 1940s, go out and sweep up the sidewalk, you know? I swept around, all around Lorenz and Elliot Market yesterday, there's cigarette butts, there's this, because you just can't take it anymore, you know? So we just need to have teeth to hold businesses accountable, to clean up their front and back properties, and for landlords to improve these apartments and these homes, and to be held accountable. These LLCs are taking over the West End, and there's just no teeth, and, and we can't get them out. And then finally, my last point was the 2 million to, to demolish buildings. I wish it was 20 million. I mean, there's, there's 10 houses I passed in the two minutes it takes to get from my house down to here, that are literally, the roofs have been shot for five years on these suckers. They all need to come down, we can't get rid of them. We can't get rid of them in our, our neighborhood. And we have seen such an exodus of good homeowners selling their properties, somebody comes in, because they're buying it for a lesser amount, and then, and then they're not keeping it up. And we're seeing now, and then the landlords and everything, for 15 years, has gone down and not up. And I hate to say that about this neighborhood, because this is where we live and we love it, but we have to put it all out there and just call spade a spade. We need more money for blight, for trash, and for infrastructure to just, to-
Bring it up.
Thank you, thank you. No, thank you, anyone else? Yes? I'm going to respond to Kelly.
Tell about the, one thing that you may not know is that we just, we've been fighting the landlords in court for 15 years, I think? And we just got the first judgment where we can now enforce our landlord registry, that just came out in the last few weeks. We have to decrease the amount of money we charge them, but the court ruled that we actually can force them to register, which gives us a vehicle to now cite them and begin this process. So that's good news.
Because as you know, we cite, we do, so when saying nothing's done is not accurate, so I want to be clear. We can cite, and we can send them to court, and whether or not they appear in court, or whether or not we can track down who they are, that, those are all things that play into this. But you know that we, we try to get people to magistrate court. And sometimes the magistrate tries to give them a continuance so that they can, either if they're going to spend the money on the fine, or they're going to spend money on the house, he tries to give them a chance to spend on the house, to fix up, to do, actually do the work. So I think there's a combination of things happening. But the Stevens School Building, I want to make clear, we were moving the police in there, we've been having meetings and conversations, we're going to probably move the police over to Banksville, and, on Route 51, in the old steamfitter building. And then we're going to make Stevens a community rec center with a, some of the community groups in our area that are working, and the city of Pittsburgh as well, and the archives for the city of Pittsburgh. So they're looking in now to see if that building can hold all that. But then we can have a little space for a District 2 museum as well, so, so we can have some of the space for, for our history in our side of town. But, yeah, there's a lot to comment on, but I, I, we talk all the time, but I want people to know that-
Forgive me, because I certainly don't mean to say nothing's being done in-
Yeah, no, I know.
What I mean, the process is so laborious-
It really is.
-and then at the time, we could, I mean, there's, you know, there's so many cases where nothing ever gets, gets resolved.
Resolved, right.
And I'm sitting there with other-
Right. It does. And I do want to say, we are talking, Anthony Calkiel and I really are advocating for additional funds, but I, to, for demo, but I don't want to just do demo, I want to, I want to rehabilitate what homes we can, so we can maintain our affordability on this side of town, because we are an affordable side of Pittsburgh, so that's it.
Kelly, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. First and foremost, if I had a nickel for every time somebody said, my district, like- First and foremost, if I had a nickel for every time somebody said, "My district," like Councilwoman Kail Smith, I know hears all the time, that all the money goes to the East End, I'd be a rich man. I really would. Because I represent Beachview, Brookline, we're kind of joined at the hip here. So I hear that all the time. And in many ways, that's true. There are bigger issues, the developers, and, you know, it's just more going on out there. So that just ends up being more cost in many different ways. I just wanted to say, the houses you're passing by that you say they all need to come down, I'd love to know if they were privately owned or city-owned. They're probably privately owned, and that's one of my biggest frustrations.
I'll be honest, because I'm on the Allegheny Real Estate website an awful lot. So there's a lot of city.
Yep.
And then there's some private, but some private that have tax liens.
Yep.
That go back 10 years.
Yep.
That should be taken at this point. We've got to get them out.
I'm with you on that 20 million for demolition for that reason alone. Just, it's like, it's like tearing out a rotten tooth, you know? I mean, I always describe it as like a dentist, you know? And then good things can happen around that. And if you have an empty lot, it's not a nuisance. People aren't going in it. Renters, they get them, they come up the code, is my most frustrating problem. It is impossible, because they ignore, we can cite them, we can, you know, we could go through all of our processes, but ultimately, you know, there's just irresponsible people. And it really bothers me, because people have to, somebody takes great care of their house, and right next door, they've got, you know, a mess. But I did want to thank Councilwoman Kail Smith. She did advocate for more demo. I think, I believe that's why we got that extra money in there for it. But I would like more and more and more myself, so I'm going to use you on my campaign, all right.
When you look at the website, though, when it says City of Pittsburgh, it doesn't mean we own it. Be careful with that. Most of the properties that say City of Pittsburgh, we don't literally own them. We have a lien against them, and we're listed, when you look at the real estate, but the titles are still tangled. We haven't cleared them. We haven't taken them to treasurer's cell, to treasurer's cell. Hopefully, the landmark will get us to be able to use sheriff's cell. So that when you see it, even though it says City of Pittsburgh, probably there's a 70% chance we don't own it.
That's true.
And I will also add, we also started the Clean and Lean Crew, which goes on private property, clean them up to keep things done, and they're housed in our 5th Division. And we're also talking about expanding them, so, yeah, because we don't want a waiting list. We want to get them done, get them moving. Okay, I'm sorry, sir. I apologize.
First, thanks very much, Council, for a chance, and thanks, everyone else, for taking a moment to hear a little information. My name is Kevin McPhillips, and I'm the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Center for Employee Ownership. Employee ownership is something that very few people probably know about, which is why I'm here this evening. Reverend Burgess, you talked about longtime sustainable effects, and you talked about wages. Employee ownership is one way of addressing that. Let me tell you about one kind of employee ownership that's been around since 1974 that very few people know about. By the way, we are a volunteer organization. We are a nonprofit, and effectively, we're trying to pay it forward. We know a little bit about this. In 1974, Congress passed a law that says the following. It said a business owner could sell some or all of their business, 20%, 40%, 100%, to their employees. The employees pay nothing, not a penny. Rather, the business takes on a loan from a bank to pay off the owner, usually over time. The federal government and the state of Pennsylvania turn around and say, "If you do this, you never have to pay tax on your profits again for whatever portion is owned by the employees. The tax savings pays off the bank." And after a few years, the employees have ownership of the business. The owner got paid full fair market value for some or all of this. The business stays where it is, stays in Pittsburgh, doesn't get sucked up. Wages in employee-owned business for minority workers are, on average, 30% higher. There is story after story after story of employee owners who, after 10 or 15 years, have $1 million in their savings accounts. They have real futures. There's a company in eastern Pennsylvania called New Age Industries that 15 years ago established a program of employee ownership. They had 35 employees. Today, they have 140 employees, and 45 of them have $1 million in their accounts. This is not a trick. This is a federal Labor Department program that nobody knows about. And we're trying to change that. And Pittsburgh is very, very important in this program. A little over two years ago, thanks to city council, Councilmember Erica Strasburger initiated hearings in council, and we established the nation's first citywide task force on employee ownership. Councilmember Coghill serves on the task force, Councilmember Strasburger, and Councilmember Deb Gross, who's not with us here this evening, as well as other leaders in economic development and workers right here in Pittsburgh form this. We have a plan to inform 30,000 businesses in the City of Pittsburgh about the benefits of employee ownership, provide toolkits, explain how to go about this, give technical assistance, and change the lives of working people here in Pittsburgh. I can tell you right now, the City of Pittsburgh, or excuse me, the City of Philadelphia is watching this. The City of Erie is watching this, and the City of Harrisburg is watching this. This is a first-in-the-nation program to do a broad-scale approach to try to teach people about this, because the fundamental problem is, nobody knows about it. Over the next 10 years, I'm sorry to say, that 4 million companies in this nation are going to sell or go out of business. It's because of the aging of the baby boomers. 70% of businesses here in the U.S. are owned by people over the age of 55. Something has to give. This can be a long-term, sustainable way of changing work here in Pittsburgh and beyond. We implore you to think about the many places in the Equity First Investment Plan where I think this would work, and it can change the lives of people here in Pittsburgh. I appreciate your time listening, and I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to, I'm grateful for your presence tonight, for you explaining to this group of people and those watching at home what employee ownership is, because it is the best-kept secret in the country when it comes to building wealth and businesses, and growing businesses, indeed. And I've been, I've been proud to serve as a co-chair of the task force with you. We had to take a slight pause because of a global pandemic, but we're back at it again, and we'll be working to reach out to as many chambers of commerce, businesses, neighborhood organizations. You know, we have many partners, and we're looking for more partners. And, you know, Kevin mentioned to me a little bit after the fact, in the sense that we had already taken a vote on city council, but while, you know, we're still having hearings, clearly, there's still an opportunity and an ongoing conversation about the utilization of these funds, how we could maybe leverage some of the funds that are available through the ARP, a very, very small amount, to ensure that this task force and that this work to grow wealth and to grow businesses in the city could continue. So it's something that I'm very interested in exploring and talking to colleagues about when we're talking about further amendments to this plan, further amendments to the 2022 budget, whatnot. So I really appreciate you being here tonight.
You know, I just want to echo her thoughts, Kevin. You know, we met a couple times. I'm trying to get you to meet on this side of town, maybe, you know? But, but you know what that does, most importantly, and I don't know enough about it to speak, you know, to the degree that you can, but first of all, if you're in a manufacturing job and your owner or the owners of that company decide, you know, "We've had it, we're going to Florida," you maintain your job, because if not, you're looking for another job. So not only that, I think you get a great deal more pride when you have a little bit of ownership in it, when you have some stake in the game. So, so, yeah, I'm looking forward to, you know, our ongoing conversations.
If I could just add that employee-owned businesses are, on average, 12% more productive. Who'd have thought? That's surprising.
Rev, do you want to respond?
No.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Keisha, I was wondering, just to sit here.
Good evening, everyone, and I'm grateful for the time to speak with you all. My name is Keisha Gomez, and I am a resident of Sheridan and the co-founder of Hope for Tomorrow, which is a nonprofit organization that's based here in the West End. We offer academic enrichment and life skill classes to youth and the families throughout the West End. We've been operating somewhat underground for the past 10 years. My family is not from Pittsburgh. My husband was born and raised in Gambia, West Africa, and I am from Miami, Florida, and we relocated here about 10 years ago. And I just want to bring awareness to the program in hopes that we can be a part of the conversation and have equal access to the funds. Our program is year-round and multi-year, so the youth join in at the third grade level, and they stay with us through to their second year post-secondary. Through our programming, we do things like help youth to start their own businesses. We work directly with the police right now, two to three times a week, and we were just seen with them last week on KDKA, where they spotlighted the work that we've been doing with them over the years. We have a very strong parent component, and we offer classes to the youth and to the adults in financial literacy, STEM and things of that accord. We also participate heavily in community service projects, and just wrapped up an anti-litter project just yesterday, where the youth had the ideas to paint garbage cans throughout the community and place it in corners of the Sheridan community to help people to have fun throwing away their trash instead of putting it on the ground, which the youth see as a huge problem as well. We recently hosted a learning hub for the last semester of the school year. We were able to serve about 40 youth throughout the West End community. We are now wrapping up our sixth annual summer camp this Friday, where we successfully served about 60 elementary and middle school students, as well as 24 high school and college-aged youth who worked with us through the Learn and Earn program, so they were compensated for their time. Our programming throughout the year and the summer is heavily funded by CDPG funding, as well as the foundations, and as our parents, because they see this as a worthy investment for their family. As also, we want to see our youth grow, okay? And not just invest in them for one day, but for their entire lives. I proudly say that all of our camp counselors this summer have been program participants without, with us throughout the years, and they were then able to help the youth grow through their influence. We currently operate out of Langley K through 8, but when it's closed, we're always scrambling for a place to go. We are hoping that we can, again, be a part of this conversation, find out how we can get a more permanent home and better resources. And that's, that's all I want to say. Thank you all for your time.
Keisha, I want to thank you for your work, because I know you do tremendous work. And I want to also say, we have you in mind for Stevens School, and I copied you on the emails about that, to Director Hornstein. Yeah. So look for that email, because I'm going to check your email when I'm done, because I copied quite a few of you on there. Okay. Because I know you need a space. And you do worthwhile work, so we want to give it to you. Is that it? Well, can I just say thank you to everyone for attending, because this is what I was hoping, that we would have an actual conversation with people. And I want to thank my colleagues, because they, not only do they humor me when I come up with these ideas of, "Let's go out to the community and have conversations," but they gave up their summer vacation to come here and be a part of this. And I want to thank our clerk's office, who's always keeping us on track. She says we're her boss. She's a drill sergeant. She keeps us in line. So I want to thank her and her staff, who are amazing. And I want to thank our IMP department. I want to thank our interpreters who come to the meetings. And I want to thank David Geiger from the URA and Mike Straylik from the Budget Office and Reverend Burgess's office. Sean Carter's here. Is Marina here? Because they're usually here helping us as well, as an extension of all of our offices. So I want to thank everyone that helps us get these meetings together. But I really want to thank, thank all of you for coming, and we want you to stay so we can talk to you and you, and we're also going to be here for a little bit.